Ms. Large. Mr. Pinatello. General Moore. Mr. Montgomery. Ms. Ramos. Mr. Fecker. Mr. Bridges. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Dr. Sweeney. Good morning, everyone. It's truly a special day here at Wright State. This is a special public session of the Board. And before we proceed, there are a few housekeeping duties I must fulfill. The Wright State University Board of Trustees is a public body to the Ohio Open Meetings Act, subject to the Ohio Open Meetings Act. It operates on a fixed agenda available to those attending the meeting. Persons wishing to address the Board in its public session should submit a written request to the Board of Trustees' office 72 hours in advance of the meeting in order to be placed on the agenda. However, all persons addressed the Board at the invitation of the Board and are subject to the time limitations and other guidelines established to maintain the good order of the meeting. As is our practice, I will remind the trustees of our conflict of interest statement. It is of utmost importance to ensure that all university decisions are free from any real or perceived conflicts of interest. Therefore, please be mindful of all obligations with which you have been charged as a trustee of Wright State University, and take the steps you deem appropriate to perform your duties fairly and impartially. One last item, the Chair would like to, I would like to introduce some special guests that we have visiting today. First of all, Amanda Wright Lane, distinguished honorary Chair of the Rise Shine Campaign, Campaign for Wright State University. Also, State Senator Peggy Lehner is joining us today. Peggy, welcome. State Representative Bill Dean is joining us as well. Bill, welcome. State Representative Niraj Jantani. Want to get this right, Fairborn Mayor Dan Kirkpatrick is joining us this morning. Rob Anderson, Fairborn City Manager, is with us as well. And our great friend and colleague, Dr. Steve Johnson, President of Sinclair Community College, is joining us. Have I missed any elected officials? Deputy Mayor Paul Koller is joining us as well from Fairborn. Thank you. And we are really honored that you have all taken the time today to join us. We come together this morning for one reason, to receive an update on the search for our seventh president of Wright State University. As you may recall, last spring, President Hopkins announced his intention to retire when his contract expires in June of 2017. The Board formed a Search and Screening Advisory Committee with the charge of forwarding one or more acceptable candidates for the Board's consideration. At that time, the Board asked Vice Chair Doug Fecker to lead our search. Along with Doug, 22 other distinguished and tireless members representing our trustees, faculty, staff, students, alumni, and community, and retirees, worked tirelessly to perform the first national search for a Wright State president in over 20 years. A few days ago, Mr. Fecker asked that we convene a public meeting of the Board with one agenda item to report on the progress of the search. Vice Chair Doug Fecker, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Thank you, fellow trustees. Today is indeed a historic day for Wright State University. Before I get to today's business for Board consideration, I want to take a moment to express the Board's sincere appreciation and thanks to the Presidential Search and Screening Committee, who is a group, as Mr. Bridges mentioned, 22 dedicated volunteers who have worked with me since last June to fulfill our charge to present the Board of Trustees with one or more acceptable candidates to become Wright State University's seventh president. And so, please bear with me, but it is important that we recognize each member of this group who put in many countless hours on this assignment, your search committee members included, and we'll applaud all at the end. From the faculty, Carol LaRanger, Brian Boyd, Latrell Jackson, and Berhan Koosa. Let's hear it for the faculty members on our committee. We had representatives of classified and unclassified staff. They were Dawn Banker and Misty Cox. We had two student representatives, Lucas Wenrick and Jordan Large. And I'm going to go off script. I just got an email yesterday that Lucas Wenrick has been accepted into the Graduate Education Program at the Harvard Graduate School of Education. Congratulations, Lucas. That's terrific. Representing the Wright State Foundation, Mr. John Lyman. Representing our alumni, Deb Downing. Representing the Council of Deans, Jay Albiari and LaPerle Winfrey. Representing the President's Cabinet, Becky Cole and Mary Ellen Ashley. Representing retirees of Wright State University, Jerry Petrack. Representing the Dayton community, we had Mary Campbell Zopf from the Muse Machine, Jeff Brock from the Green County Foundation, Anthony Whitmore and Debbie Feldman from the Dayton community. And we had four of my fellow trustees, or three of my fellow trustees plus me, Grace Ramos, Alois Broner, and C.D. Moore. Thank you. I also want to recognize the tremendous administrative support provided by the Search Committee by Amanda Baker, who is a graduate intern and a student in the Master's Program in International and Comparative Politics here at Wright State University. We had Mark Anderson, Matt Boaz, Larry Chan, Sherry Micky Boggs, Bob Mahalik, and Robert Sweeney. Please give them a round of applause. The truth is, this Search Committee spent countless hours conducting the search, and the university is indebted to them for their effort. The Committee began its process last June. Its first event was a half-day workshop to learn about presidential searches, since Wright State University had not conducted such a search since 1992. In many ways, our Committee had to develop the search process from scratch, because our last search predated, among other things, Facebook, Google, Snapchat, Twitter, Skype, smartphones, and heck, our last search predated several members of the Search Committee. You can thank me later for that. The Committee conducted the search in four phases. We had a preparation phase, a learning phase, a search phase, and the selection onboarding phase. The learning phase was used to listen to the campus community about what Wright State University should look for in its next president. It consisted of a campus-wide survey, which attracted more than 2,000 responses, public forums here and at the Lake Campus, attended by hundreds, individual listening sessions with key campus and community stakeholders, and a presidential symposium on the challenges facing public universities in Ohio moderated by Steve Johnson from Sinclair Community College. The result of the learning phase was the creation of a presidential profile, which we used to help select our candidates. The search phase began with the choosing of Academic Search to assist us in the search. We have Max Stewart here representing Academic Search. We began accepting applications in October and ultimately reached 61 applications for the position. Applications were solicited by direct recruiting, third-party nominations, and advertising in more than a dozen higher education periodicals and outlets, including outlets serving a wide diversity of university administrators. As I mentioned, Max Stewart is able to join us today. The Search Committee then met for a half-day session in December to consider the 61 applications, and after wide-ranging discussions, and I can promise you, they were wide-ranging, the list was narrowed to 12 candidates who were invited to neutral-site interviews. Two of those candidates withdrew their applications prior to the interviews after they accepted jobs at other universities. We then held neutral-site interviews with the 10 remaining candidates over two full days in Columbus, and they were two grueling days, from basically sunup till sundown. The same questions were asked of each of the candidates, and each candidate was given ample opportunity to demonstrate their skills and abilities for this job. As I mentioned, these were two really long days. The Search Committee discussed each of the 10 candidates at length, then conducted a secret ballot in which committee members listed the three candidates they wanted to invite to campus. When we tallied the ballots, it was clear the Committee was of one mind regarding the top three candidates, each of whom received 15 or 16 mentions in the secret ballot, far more votes than the next closest candidates received. These three finalists were invited to both of our campuses. There was one overriding reason the Committee decided not to release the names of the sitting presidents, who were our finalists until the day before their visit, and I know this has been talked about on our campus. It had to do with confidentiality. The Committee knew that if we released a candidate's name too early in the process, he or she might withdraw from the search or not even apply in the first place, and it was so important that we get the very best candidates in the country to apply for this position. Fact is, many universities, including several public universities in Ohio, have chosen to address the issue of confidentiality by conducting closed searches. In these cases, the Boards of Trustees make their decision without any input from the campus or the surrounding community. We knew that wouldn't work at Wright State University. It's not our culture. It's not the way we do things. So, the Search Committee was committed to conducting a transparent process and knew our candidates would be required to come to our campus for vetting. But we also knew that to get top candidates, we had to balance their privacy needs, and I hope you understand why we did what we did. The campus visits were by far the most important part of the selection process. The three candidates met the campus community in a series of open forums, receptions, and private meetings with key administrators. The Search Committee began receiving information almost immediately on each candidate, which allowed further vetting and discovery. This is exactly what we expected, since in the world of higher education, it probably doesn't exist the perfect candidate. And we needed the entire community to help us vet these candidates to determine who would ultimately end up as the seventh president of Wright State University. After the campus visits, the Search Committee met in executive session for more than four hours to discuss the final three candidates. The conversations, I promise you, were open, candid, and wide-ranging. At the conclusion of that meeting, the Committee agreed through a formal consensus process to present the acceptable candidates to the Board of Trustees. The Search Committee then met with the Board of Trustees on the evening of February 13th and presented all the information it had gleaned on each of the candidates. After taking questions from the Board and asserting that the candidates presented were acceptable, the Committee completed its work and left the task to the Board of Trustees. As my fellow trustees well realize, this was a very difficult choice, given the quality of candidates presented by the Search Committee. In a way, it was a good thing, a good problem to have, though it meant a quick decision was not forthcoming. The quality of candidates given to the Board gave the Board plenty to think about and to consider. We know there is no more important decision than the selection of a university president. The Board also invited, I believe for the first time ever, its student trustees, Ryan Pinatello and Jordan Large, to participate in the Board's deliberation over choosing a president. That's because Wright State University is all about its students. Students needed to have a voice in the process, not just on the Search Committee, but on the Board's deliberations. We can all be proud of these two impressive students who represented the student body so well during the discussions, and they added a quality to the Board's discussions we simply wouldn't have had otherwise. Then, as you all know, one of our candidates withdrew from the process. The Board then requested the final two candidates to make in-depth presentations to the Board regarding what Wright State University could expect if they were chosen as our new leader. We gave them information on the many strengths of our university and indeed the challenges that we face. The presentations provided by the two finalists at this point were remarkable. It was clear that each of the two candidates spent hours preparing, and the information they provided gave the Board even more insight into their impressive capabilities. In the end, though, the Board could only select one candidate. After many hours of discussion and deliberation, discussions which, to be candid, were at times intense and passionate, a decision was made to choose the candidate the Board felt best fit with Wright State University's status as a modern, public-research university. In a few minutes, the Board of Trustees will consider a resolution to appoint the university's seventh president. It is an appointment of a candidate for whom more than 90% of the campus community deemed acceptable. It is the appointment of the university's first female president. It is the appointment indeed of the president who will lead us into the future. As I said before, this is indeed a historic day. And so, without further ado, I offer the following resolution to the Board of Trustees for your consideration. Whereas the Board of Trustees charged the Presidential Search and Screening Advisory Committee to submit one or more acceptable candidates for consideration to become the seventh president of Wright State University, and whereas the Committee presented three strong candidates for the university community to meet, ask questions, and provide feedback, and whereas the Committee's review of the university community feedback shaped their submission to the Board, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Wright State University, after careful review of the candidates forwarded by the Presidential Search and Screening Advisory Committee, name Cheryl B. Schrader as the seventh president of Wright State University.
Thank you, Mr. Fecker. Do I have a second?
Grace Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a member of the Search and Screening Advisory Committee, I would like to reiterate that we did have a rich pool of resumes to review, we did interview the best of the best, and we did present a stellar slate of presidential candidates for the campus to review. I am also pleased to have a role in breaking the glass ceiling at Wright State University. They're women. So, it is with great enthusiasm and pride that I second the motion to name Cheryl B. Schrader Wright State University's seventh president.
Thank you, Grace. Dr. Sweeney, before I call for a roll-call vote, the Chair recognizes the president of the student government, Lucas Wenrick.
Thank you. Good afternoon, or good morning. This is a momentous occasion for our Raider community. Over the last 10 months, Jordan Large and I have had the incredible opportunity to represent the student body on the Search and Screening Advisory Committee. This Committee has worked diligently through an extensive and transparent process to determine which of the 61 applicants would be chosen to serve as our next president. It is my great honor to welcome Dr. Cheryl Schrader as the seventh president of Wright State University. One of the first steps that we took in this process was to develop a presidential search profile that clearly laid out the qualities that our next president would possess. We determined 18 different qualifications, but I would like to discuss the first point on that profile. We said that we would need a servant leader who would advocate tirelessly on behalf of the university and its students, faculty, staff, and alumni. Dr. Cheryl Schrader is that servant leader. She will be our biggest fan and present our incredible university to the world as we emerge on our 50th birthday. She has a comprehensive record of success at her prior institutions, and I'm confident that she will take our amazing university to new heights. I look forward to welcoming her to our Raider community and anticipate a strong and vibrant relationship between the students and her administration. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Cheryl Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Wenrick, and the more than 17,000 students you represent. The Chair now recognizes Dawn Banker and Misty Cox from the Classified and Unclassified Staff, respectively.
Good morning. Misty and I, as past chairs of Unclassified and Classified Staff Advisory Councils, are grateful for the opportunity to have served on the Search Committee representing the staff at Wright State. We would like to welcome Dr. Cheryl Schrader as Wright State University's first female president. The Staff Council looks forward to future collaborations with the president to help create a transparent, purposeful, and inclusive atmosphere and empower all individuals at Wright State University.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Banker, Ms. Cox, and our wonderful staff. Thank you. The Chair now recognizes the representative of more than 108,000 alumni, of which I am one, Deb Downing.
Good morning. As president of the Board of the Wright State University Alumni Association, it was my honor to serve on the Search Committee. On behalf of the entire Alumni Association Board and the more than 108,000 alumni of this great university, it is my pleasure to welcome Dr. Cheryl Schrader as the seventh president of Wright State University. We look forward to working together with Dr. Schrader to achieve our mission of engaging alumni to support the university by offering a sense of belonging, community, connection, and pride in Wright State University.
Thank you, Deb Downing and the Alumni Association. The Chair now recognizes the president of the Wright State University Foundation, Rebecca Cole.
Good morning. As president of the Wright State University Foundation, it is my great honor to extend an enthusiastic welcome from Dr. John Lyman, Chair, and the members of the Foundation Board of Trustees. We are looking forward to an active and visionary partnership with you and to building on the tremendous successes of Rise Shine, the Campaign for Wright State University. Our 30,711 donors are looking forward to hearing from you and to helping to build an exciting future for our great university. Welcome, Dr. Schrader.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. The Chair now recognizes two community members from the Search Committee, Mary Campbell Zopf and Anthony Whitmore.
Good morning, everyone. It's great to be here. As the executive director of Muse Machine and a very active member of the region's arts community, it was my honor to participate in the presidential search process. And today, it is my great pleasure to welcome Dr. Cheryl Schrader as the seventh president of our beloved university. We in the arts community welcome her and know that her creative spirit will bring a lot to the campus, and we want to work with Dr. Schrader to really unlock the creative potential of Wright State students, the life of the university, and really the creative spirit of this region.
Thank you, Mary. Good morning. On behalf of the greater Dayton community, it is my pleasure and honor to welcome Dr. Cheryl Schrader as the seventh president of Wright State University. The greater Dayton community looks forward to meeting and certainly working with Dr. Schrader as her administration, as cooperative partners. Welcome, Dr. Schrader, to a remarkable community where business, creativity, innovation, collaboration, partnership, research, the arts, academia, and certainly a great hard-working workforce are the major threads to the success of our greater Dayton region. Welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Zopf, Mr. Whitmore. The Chair recognizes the president of the faculty, Dr. Carol LaRanger.
Good morning, everyone. As president of the faculty of Wright State and on behalf of the university faculty, I'm pleased to welcome Dr. Schrader as the seventh president of Wright State University. And speaking for my fellow faculty on the Search Committee, I want to say how pleased we were with the diversity and quality of our applicant pool and with the role faculty leadership has played in working with other constituencies of the university to help shape the university's profile, which I believe helped us draw such talented candidates. President Schrader, you will not find a more committed, enterprising, and engaged faculty, nor one more willing to work with you through shared governance to make Wright State's second-half century a brilliant one. We look forward to partnering with you in pursuing our mission of transforming the lives of our students and the communities we serve.
Thank you, Dr. LaRanger. And now, without further ado, Dr. Sweeney, will you please call the roll? Mr. Bridges? Yes. Mr. Fecker?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
General Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Ramos?
Yes.
The motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, it gives me great pleasure to introduce the seventh president of Wright State University, Dr. Cheryl Schrader.
It is just an absolutely fantastic day for me and my family. We are so very pleased to be here with you today. And as I look out over this crowd, I see some friends, and that is also very, very wonderful. I am both honored and humbled to be the seventh president in the history of Wright State University. And I do have to let you all in on a little secret. Seven is my lucky number. So, thank you to the Wright State University Board of Trustees for the confidence and the trust that you place in me today. And I do look forward to working together to shape the vision for the next 50 years. Thank you to President Hopkins for his years of service to the university. And I would also like to extend my deepest gratitude to the entire Wright State University family, the faculty, the staff, the students, the alumni, and our administrators and friends as well, for engaging with me over the past several months, and for making me feel so welcome, and also for showing me what a very special place this is. I thank all those who were involved in the search process, from the Search and Screening Committee, to the hosts of the off-site and campus visits, to the organizers and the workers who were behind the scenes, picking up all those little details. And I know how very challenging a search process can be. And I do want you to know that everything you did convinced me how invested you are in this institution and how much you care deeply for it. I would be remiss if I did not also thank my husband, Jeff. Jeff, would you stand? And our daughter, Ella. Ella, would you stand? Thank you for joining me on this new adventure, and also for your love and encouragement. Thank you. We have an adult son, Andrew, who likely is watching from afar, and he is very eager to explore this campus and the community. I'm very, very blessed. Together, we all make a great team, and together, we will take this university to the next level. So, let's think for a moment about the environment that we find ourselves in. The nation today is at a crossroads. Policymakers, educators, and entrepreneurs alike are wrestling with immense issues that threaten our future. Global competitiveness, environmental sustainability, energy security, economic growth, geopolitical instability, these issues and more weigh heavily on our minds. As the president-designate of this fine university, I believe that institutions like Wright State must take a leadership role in addressing these challenges, and we must provide abundant opportunities for provide abundant opportunities for young men and women to excel in fields that will define our future, our success, and will help improve our world and the human condition. We must nurture an ecosystem that allows creativity and innovation to thrive among all of our students, our scholars, our researchers, and our employees. Only through creative thinking and the convergence of ideas will we be able to address the critical issues of our time, as well as prepare coming generations for the issues that they will face in the future. Innovation is at the core of this university's founding. As Charles Kettering stated, "The Wright brothers flew right through the smokescreen of impossibility." Research universities like Wright State play a pivotal role in addressing important national and state challenges. However, the old playbook for higher education is undergoing significant revision, and no single institution can solve these challenges on its own. At both the Lake Campus and the Dayton Campus, more and more, we look to innovative academic, government, industry, business, and community partnerships. Albert Einstein famously said, "We can't solve problems by using the same kind of thinking we used when we created them." And neither can we address problems by single-solution thinking. True innovation requires the best ideas from all possible sources. Of primary importance to me, as I enter the presidency of Wright State University, is the utmost care and concern for the people of Wright State. You've gone through a tumultuous several years. You can expect leadership from your next president that engages and empowers the campus community. There are tremendous challenges to face, and tremendous opportunities to capture. This will be a year or two that will require all invested in working together for the good of the university. Moving forward will involve engaged teams who share responsibility and authority for the task at hand. By involving these teams in setting our course, this sense of ownership and identity will create sustainability. Now, I have thoughtfully developed a framework for my first year at Wright State University, and I just want to briefly outline my goals, so you have some sense of what I'm pondering, and also, so you can see what you might expect, and find how you can engage in shaping the university. Now, I suspect that you are viewing this leadership transition with excitement, and probably a little healthy nervousness. Frankly, so am I. From today until I set foot on this campus as president, I will be preparing for my new role, assessing vulnerabilities, and laying the groundwork for our success. In my first 100 days, I will be creating and beginning to implement this first-year strategy, shaping our business team and aligning expectations, beginning to embrace the culture, and communicating, communicating, communicating. And over the first year, I will focus on a three-fold mission: financial sustainability, administrative transparency, and campus conversation. I look forward to getting to know you, to building relationships, to creating network and support coalitions, to understanding the people of Wright State and its culture, and determining how we can dialogue in the best ways. Together, we will develop a long-term financial sustainability model. Together, we will chart the course for our next 50 years. Together, we will create a vision and plan that will guide us forward, so that Wright State University is a great place to work and to be. So that Wright State University is what it needs to be for this nation, and for what Ohio needs it to be. So thank you again for the opportunity to lead Wright State University, and also to join this grand community. Go Raiders!
So, Dr. Schrader, at this time, we have a little more housekeeping to do. We here at Wright State are very proud of our athletics, and I've invited Bob Grant, our athletic director, to come up. We have something to give you, here, right here.
Number seven!
There you are. So BG, stand over here. Let's do this. Congratulations.
Thank you.
No, 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 definitely not. But I do want to know about the future weapons. Also, before we adjourn, I'd like to invite our two student trustees to come up. Ryan Pignatello, Jordan Large, come on up. We did a little research and discovered that your daughter Ella likes the color blue, and she just happens to like chocolate as well. So Ella and Jeff, if you would please come up and join us at this time on the stage. We would like to formally welcome you to your new home. And Jeff, we have something for you as well. There you are. So, welcome to Wright State. So, I hope you'll stay for a while and visit with each other, the search committee, the trustees, president-designate Schrader is going to head to the Wright Brothers' room for a brief press conference, and then she will be back to meet you. Thank you all for coming. Special thank you to the Presidential Search and Screening Committee for a job well done. I would be remiss if I did not also thank the Western Ohio Education Foundation, the Wright State University Foundation, for their support. Thank you to the Alumni Association, to their extensive networks connecting graduates all over this country. And having been a student just a few years ago, when it was just me, Orville, and Wilbur here on campus, past, personal thank you to our faculty, our staff, our students, past and present, not only for what you do to assist, did to assist in the search, but for what you do every day to make Wright State and Raider country so successful. Without objection, this meeting is adjourned.